We're good. Good evening, welcome. I'm going to call to order a regular meeting of the Hastings Board of Education for May 20th, 2025. Welcome, everybody. It's like for all of us, one of our favorite times of the year, especially this year has been a lot of heavy stuff. This is the good stuff, the light stuff, not for you guys, but for us to watch it. We're welcoming Melissa Sandroff and four students who are from the science research, what do they call it, curriculum, who are going to make their presentations for us. I think most of us remember the ones from last year. So, I don't know, Bill, you want to start off, but Ms. Sandroff, welcome. Students, welcome, and we're excited to see what you have to present, so.
Thank you so much for having us. I'm just going to do a very quick presentation about the, that's better, about the science research program for anyone who hasn't seen it. Our program started in 2007. I proposed it after I took a two-year course at Columbia for science teachers, and they wanted us to bring something back to our classrooms, so I brought science research back to our classroom. There's definitely been increased interest in the course this year. We just had to go through an application process because we had 58 freshmen and 55 sophomores apply. That's the most ever by far. So, we did end up accepting 35 students in each grade. So, moving forward, we are moving to a three-year science research course. We were the only school in Westchester that was two years. This allows for more in-depth research and greater opportunities. Our students can do one project over three years or two separate projects at this point. It also is unique in that this year we're allowing sophomores and juniors to apply, and in future years, students will only be able to apply to the program as freshmen to start as sophomores. Moving forward also, we will be able to offer SUNY Albany Science Research in the High School, which allows students to garner a total of 12 college credits. Each course a student takes is approximately $210, so not per credit, but $210, and students who are eligible for free lunch can apply for a reduced fee. We feel this is a huge opportunity for students to get college credit. Sophomore and junior year in the program, the students have been reading peer-reviewed articles, they prepare a resume, we look for mentors, we do meet students bi-weekly to set individualized goals because the students are at all parts of their research. Some start their research very early, others go to labs, but we do individualize goals. And then they prepare for and begin to work on their projects, they write a research plan, and much of the research does occur during the summer between junior and senior years. We do have students who go into labs, some are out in the field, some do their work at home, and you'll hear a mix of those today. And then senior year, the students write a paper for science fair applications, they create a 12-minute PowerPoint, a poster, you can see the students at their posters here at our Westchester Science and Engineering Fair, and they participate in various science fairs. They also help me judge at science fairs, they helped judge at the middle school fair this year, which was great, and they're going to be helping, our sophomores, our juniors are participating in the Somers Science Fair next weekend, and they're helping us with that as well. And we will be setting up a mentoring program for the seniors to help the juniors and sophomores next year. Just some highlights, our students have gone to the highest level of all competitions, the Regeneron Science Talent Search, we had one finalist and numerous scholars, Junior Science and Humanity Symposium, we've had many students go to Upstate JSHS, including three this year, Bruce Nidel, Jack Maney, and Tobias Navarrete, you can see them in the picture up there. And then the Regeneron International Science and Engineering Fair, you'll hear from Adam Greenberg today, but we've had students go numerous years, and Adam and I just returned from Columbus on Friday night where he presented at the international fair, which was super exciting, so. Other highlights, we've had two students so far publish this year, one, Jack Maney, he's actually lead author on this paper, which is pretty exciting, and Sophie Starosta was published as well for some work she did on a case study in cardiology. And some of the benefits, just our students get real-world experience in critical thinking, creativity, they're really doing graduate-level work in many cases. They also, to me, equally important is communication skills, learning how to send emails, attend meetings, and talking to professionals, including the judges that they speak with, their competitions. So, I think the benefits are numerous and way more than what I have up here, but we're really excited that everyone supported us moving to a three-year program, so thank you.
That's great. Thank you very much.
All right, so I think we need the next presentation, and we'll have our students come up. Did anyone have any questions? Okay, excellent. All right, Ben.
Good evening, Ben.
Hello. All right, so my name is Ben Learman, and my-
Just hold the mic up a little bit, yeah, it's very-
My name is Ben Learman, and my research project was on how fibrin proteins are essential for heart regeneration in zebrafish. So, when humans experience a heart attack, they have a limited ability to regenerate their heart, and this ultimately leads to heart failure and adverse remodeling, where there's long-term damage in the heart. However, zebrafish are able to regenerate their hearts with having their cardiac cells re-enter the cell cycle and migrate into this injured area to fully regenerate the heart. So, the goal of my, the problem and goal of my experiment was, there's this idea that the fibrin genes have an important role in the early development of vascular tissue, but its role in cardiac repair hasn't been investigated yet. So, the goal of my experiment was to identify how fibrin genes regenerate the heart following an injury. And the way in which we did this was, we generated a transgenic line where we had normal zebrafish hearts compared to a zebrafish heart with the absence of fibrin proteins, and we exposed both of these hearts to cryo-injury, which was a technique we used to simulate what a heart attack looked like in humans. We then performed sectioning and staining in order to see the progress of the regeneration in the zebrafish hearts. So, my results showed that there was significantly decreased amount of cardiac cell dedifferentiation, which is the process where mature heart cells revert into an immature state to have the regenerative potential to regenerate the heart. And we also showed that in the absence of fibrin proteins, so in this fibrin triple mutant, so when fibrins were not present in the zebrafish, there was significantly decreased amount of proliferation when compared to the normal zebrafish heart. And lastly, we also showed that in the absence of fibrin proteins, there was increased scar tissue when compared to the normal zebrafish heart. And ultimately, in conclusion, this shows the importance of fibrin gene activation in order to have proper cardiac regeneration with a proper cardiac cell proliferation. And by expanding our knowledge on fibrin proteins and similar proteins that help create this environment where the cardiac cells can proliferate, we can expand regenerative medicine in order to help treat patients who are suffering from myocardial infarction or a heart attack. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Outstanding.
Yes.
That was a fantastic presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
The slides, everything, really strong. Where did you conduct this research?
I was at Columbia University, the hospital.
Wow. Oh, her mic's not on here.
How did you ever think to analyze a zebrafish?
Well, yes, so I was in a lab that previous, that worked with zebrafish, and the, the reason why we use zebrafish is that they have, about 70% of their genes are shared with the human genome, making them a good animal model to study. Additionally, they're one of the only vertebrates that regenerate, so making them one similar model that we can use and hopefully translate into human research.
That's fantastic.
This is so impressive.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Anyone else?
Ben, don't run away, and you're the first, everyone's going to get the same question. What drives you for this? What brought you to this question? I'm going to ask everyone else the same question, so you get it first.
I've always been interested in science and medicine, and in the future, I want to become a doctor, and I've always also been interested in cardiology and specifically the heart. I've always been fascinated about like its anatomy and physiology and how it ultimately helps humans. Also, this research with zebrafish was something new that I haven't really seen before, and it sounded very, very interesting. Thank you.
That's great, wish you all the luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Hello, my name is Sophia, and the title of my project is Surface and Mechanical Characterization of MXene with Layered Polymers Using Atomic Force Microscopy for Exploring Its Use in Energy Storage Applications. So, before I begin the goal of this project, I just want to define a few terms. So, MXene is a type of 2D material, aptes and dopamine are both adhesive polymers, and AFM is a microscopy technique, atomic force microscopy, and it can do nanoscale analysis of really small materials. So, the goal of my research was to characterize the stiffness and height of MXene samples with layered aptes and dopamine polymers, to understand how these materials would function in energy storage applications using the technique of atomic force microscopy. So, for my methods, my mentor obtained the AFM data of six MXene apte samples and six MXene dopamine samples, and I performed all ensuing procedures. So, the first thing that I did was perform a literature review, and within that, I had to learn about AFM image artifacts, and so while AFM is a very powerful tool, it can also cause a lot of false images to appear within the scan, so I had to learn how to remove those. And then secondly, I learned about competitor 2D materials, which I discussed in my discussion, to put MXene samples into context, basically so we could compare these materials to those that are already on the market. And then for image analysis, I used an open-source scanning probe microscopy software called Guidian. Using that software, I did the height and stiffness profiles of my samples, and I also did image artifact removal, which I discussed earlier, and then I also enhanced the images so the human eyes could better interpret these images. And then finally, for data analysis, I used Python to make graphical representations of my modules and also to produce modules and height averages. So, for my results, I found that these materials can have unmatched advantages for microelectronic devices, and I also discussed that MXene research is still in its infancy, so more efforts needed in a number of scientific disciplines to develop MXene-based wearable electronics. And I also realized that these materials could be really useful for supercapacitors because they have a really large surface area compared to their thickness, and they have really interesting properties which have been researched previously. And these materials can also be used for more climate-friendly energy storage technologies. And finally, it's important that these materials are studied because nanotechnologies can offer more intimate human-machine interactions. So, you can see Table 3 is just a table that I produced for my discussion, which compares the moduli and heights of the 2D materials that already have been researched as compared to the MXene with aptes and MXene dopamine flakes that I studied. And then on the right, you can see images of the AFM scans that I did, and finally, at the top are some graphs that I created using Python. So, that's it, thank you. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, thank you. Any questions?
So, what drove you to this? What's the passion? What brought you here?
That's a good question.
So, I was initially introduced to material science from my interest in silk proteins and their applications for like material properties, so for my Somers project, I thought about integrating silk proteins with like a novel silk, dragline silk-inspired protein matrix with carbon nano fibers, which are a type of carbon nano structure, and that got me interested in 2D materials. And so, my mentor at Georgia Tech was doing research on MXene, and this was a very new field to me, so, you know, I had to learn a lot, but I thought it was really interesting because I didn't know much about it at all. So, now I'm really interested in 2D materials and material science in general.
That's wonderful, that's wonderful.
Thank you for your great presentation. How did you find your mentor at Georgia Tech?
So, basically, in Ms. Sandroff's class, we do a lot of cold, like cold emailing, and basically just read a bunch of papers, and then, you know, we see who wrote these papers and which papers we're interested in. So, I emailed probably about 20 labs, and I only got a response from one, but, you know, this one was really cool, and it's one of a few, only a few in the country that do material science research like this.
That's wonderful, Sophia.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Kaylee Maloney, and I'll be talking about my project utilizing an indirect basophil activation assay to interrogate the potency of BETB1 and related allergens. So, basophils are allergic cells, so if you have cells from an allergic individual and you expose them to an allergen, they're going to react and activate. And then BETB1 is a protein found in birch pollen, and birch pollen is a tree pollen, so a majority of people with birch pollen allergy are allergic to BETB1, and BETB1 cross-reacts with other pollens and other foods. So, my goal, my problem was that there have not been robust studies characterizing BETB1 cross-reactivity, specifically looking at the potency of BETB1 and related allergens in vitro, so using a cell model. And then my goal was to determine if sensitization to multiple BETB1-related allergens would affect basophil activation, so if the cells were sensitized and allergic to more than one allergy, would they have greater activation? To determine if having greater levels of specific IgE, so that antibody for BETB1, would affect basophil activation, and to determine if there is a variability in potency of BETB1 and related allergens. So, are there certain allergens that cause more severe reactions than others? For my methods, I completed an indirect basophil activation test, so I isolated basophils from a Buffy coat, which is a portion of whole blood, and then I sensitized overnight with my controls and my experimental group, and then I plated and washed my samples and exposed them to the allergen. I also ran an immunocap to confirm allergic donor status of the blood. So, for my results, isolation and sensitization of donor basophils of allergic donor serum was achieved, meaning that the basophils were successfully activated. And we observed high cross-reactivity between BETB1 and QA1, which is a protein found in oak, and Cora 1.04, which is a protein found in hazelnut food, indicating that these proteins may be more potent than other BETB1-related allergens. And then this research is important because it leads to the understanding of allergen cross-reactivity and can inform future studies of allergen cross-reactivity. Peanut, for example, has many cross-reactive epitopes that cause those severe anaphylactic reactions, and this research can be used to determine which of these epitopes are causing those severe reactions in patients. It can also inform future treatments for birch-allergic rhinitis or hay fever because it, it shows that QA1 or oak is a very cross-reactive protein, so patients may experience allergies to both oak and birch, so we may need to block oak and birch. Thank you.
So, Kaylee, you know what I'm going to ask you? What drove you to this question? What brought you to it?
So, I'd anecdotally seen rates of autoimmune diseases and allergy increasing, and I was wondering why that was, so I applied to a program where I would be able to study allergy or autoimmune diseases, and then I started researching cross-reactivity of BETB1.
Where was, where was the program?
Regeneron.
And do you think you'll continue any of this research in college and beyond?
Yes, I'm actually going back for the university internship this summer.
Oh, great.
Well done.
Thank you.
And our last presentation is Adam Greenwald, apparently I said the wrong name, after spending a whole week with him.
Hello.
Good evening.
So, my project, my name is Adam, and my project is on the evaluation of earthworms and vermicompost on Elatus 1 lunar regolith simulant to improve plant growth efficiency on the moon. So, if missions to the moon plan for the near future, a significant amount of lunar research is being conducted, including in finding reliable food sources such as plants to allow for permanent lunar settlements. However, well, also, these plants are usually grown in something called lunar regolith, which is the rocky coverage of a lunar surface. However, these, however lunar regolith deterges plant growth normally because of toxic characteristics, low organic material, and like lack of nutrients. So, many studies have looked to see if plants can increase or grow well in the simulant by adding like compost and organisms, but no study has looked to see, and while this does increase plant growth, and no studies look to see like if you combine organisms and compost together at the same time, if that increased plant growth. So, I looked to see if you could add worms, so earthworms, and a compost called vermicompost, which normally provide nutrients, make the soil better in earth soil, as a viable treatment to improve the soil fertility of lunar regolith and thus increase plant growth. So, I grew brassicaropla seedlings, it's the type of plant, for 18 days in potting soil, which is the control, it's basically like earth soil, and a variety of combinations of lunar soil, vermicompost, and earthworms, so mixture, different mixtures of it, measuring factors such as like germination, shoot height, number of leaves, leaf area, and chlorophyll content. So, what I found is that when you just add vermicompost or just add earthworms to lunar soil, plants do not have enhanced growth. So, like, for example, when the germination, which is like the amount of plants that grow in a soil treatment, was much lower with just adding worms or just adding vermicompost in comparison to plants grown on earth soil, because the soil is very compact, so when you add water to it, it becomes very like cement-like, so the shoots have a hard time to like penetrate the surface and they'll sprout. When you add both vermicompost and earthworms to the soil at the same time, so a mixture of all three treatments, plants had really similar growth to potting soil, which is the control, showing the effectiveness of possibly adding organic materials with organisms at the same time on the moon to create sustainable food sources. And this is very important because if we can create sustainable food sources on the moon, we can create permanent settlements, and that'll allow us to, you know, branch out further in our universe, try to get to Mars, try to have a permanent settlement on the moon to mine resources, or there's a lot of, it's a whole different science field that we can't really get to unless we can find ways to create permanent settlements and sustainable food sources on the moon, which is why my study finding this treatment that is very effective might allow for this to be furthered in the future. So, that's it.
Goodness. Bill?
So, you ready for the question?
Yeah, go for it.
All right, your passion, what brought you to this? What brought you to this?
So, I was always interested in space, like I would watch all like the astronauts doing missions on the space station or seeing the Artemis missions go to the moon, and also was always interested in like gardening, you know, with my dad or parents, and I was trying to like see like what I wanted to do when it came to science research, and I realized there was a field called astrobotany, which is plants in space, and I was able to combine my two interests and research it, and then find mentor in the field because it's such a niche field that a lot of them want to like help high schoolers or college students because everyone, it's such a niche field, they want to grow the field in the first place, so I was able to find a lot of people to help me out, and I really found a cool experiment to work with.
This is such a cool experiment, I'm a gardener, so I'm fascinated. Where did you get the lunar soil?
Yeah.
Or the lunar material?
So, when they went to the moon on the Apollo missions in like the late 60s, 70s, they, or early 70s, they were able to bring back a lot of rocks from the moon, and they simulated it in labs because NASA has a very low amount of the soil, you know, because it's like in a vault, and I think only one study has ever grown plants in actual lunar soil. So, what they did was they simulated it in a lab, and you can buy it, so I got it from a lab, it's like, it's pretty cheap, but I was able to, it's a good replica of it, and it represents like the soil where they've been on the moon previously.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So, I, there's a method to my questioning, and I actually, Ms. Sandroff, if you want to come up to the mic, that's going to relate.
You should ask her if she got interested.
So, as Ms. Sandroff knows, when I get a chance to come in and see the students, I ask that kind of question because you are guiding them to be deep in research, and research is going to have as many frustrating moments, many of us have been deep in research, not like this, but close, maybe. The frustrating is, what carries you past the frustration? So, that's the reason for what it may sound like a little goofy question for me, but it's, you got to have something at the heart, the passion. But I, I want to just applaud what you do, and I, I don't know how you facilitate such an incredible range of content and material. I mean, that is so beyond the typical pedagogical instructional moment. How do you do that? How do you guide such a great range of intellectual inquiry?
Well, I have awesome students to start off with. Yeah, they just, they come in with ideas, and I just guide them on how to find articles and how to find researchers and contact them, and it always amazes me when researchers break back, you know, that's, sometimes I think it's, they're excited, anyone's reading their papers, and sometimes I think, you know, like Adam's mentor is just this astrobotanist who's super excited, right, Adam? And he couldn't have been happier to help Adam out. So, it's really nice when you come upon these people who are willing to give their time, and, you know, we really appreciate the mentors and the effort they put into helping our students, so.
That's great, that's great, always a pleasure.
Thank you, thanks for having us, we really appreciate it.
Great, oh, Maureen, Maureen.
I just wanted to compliment Ms. Sandroff, you're like the earthworm to their plant growth. Really, like you bring out the best in, in these students, and I can't get over like what they're conquering, it's so impressive, so thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks for all your support.
Yeah, thank you all, great job. And moving on? Yeah. So, our next presentation is from Austin Hills and Christina Gagliardi for the Hastings Robotics Team.
So, so we've created a little competition within the science realm in Hastings.
Never, no competition.
So, no competition.
Actually, a lot of, yeah, a lot of overlap, actually.
I know, I'm trying to, I got the smiles. We want some smiles in Hastings, and we got it, but I, I have to have a little bit of a humorous moment with you beyond that, which is, you know, Ms. Sandroff has done this for a number of years, having, you know, accolades are well-deserved, you two come wandering on the hallway, go to Melissa DeLaBarre, who's managing the vote right now, and says, "Do you think maybe we might find some time?" And, and we sprinted the answer, "Yes." So-
Well, thank you.
Please, proceed.
Of course. So, my name's Austin Hills, and about this time last year, a handful of our wonderful students came hunting me down in the hallway, and if, if we could start a First Robotics Team, and if you were anything like me, I had no idea what that really was. So, we did some research, so just a little bit of research on what First Robotics is. Basically, they run three different competitions, they run a Lego League competition, a tech competition, and a robotics competition. And we were fortunate enough to have a conversation with a wonderful woman named Janice Martino, she's the New York State Director for the robotics competition, and she kind of nudged us in the direction that that's the competition we should be competing at our high school. And then furthermore, she put us in contact with some mentors over at the Austin team, and they've been wonderful. It's their three mentors are Mark, Doug, and Nick, I don't know why, it skipped my mind, they were fantastic, and we wouldn't have survived without the help over at our team from Austin. So, we have a presentation tonight, and hopefully you learn some stuff.
Right on.
I just wanted to add, in April, we were invited by Doug, the Austin mentor, to go to Nationals down in Houston, just me and Austin as chaperones, and it was, I would say, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity just to go and learn. We went to so many conferences, and I feel like it, like our regional competition felt like a family, and all these adults supporting everyone, and the kids supporting one another, but at this national level, you still felt like a giant family, and it was very obvious that this could be like a lifetime family for so many students, because everyone that pretty much worked there went through First Robotics, and it's just, I think, a great opportunity and something I hope we get to experience with all the students many years to come. Okay, with that, we'll bring the students in to talk.
Welcome again.
Hi again. All right, so, hi, my name is Sophia, as you know, and Jacob and I, Jacob's over there, are the co-presidents of the Bionic Buzzers, which is the Hastings Robotics Team. So, inspired by the engineering talents of our friends and wanting to expand our knowledge, we co-founded the Hastings Robotics Team at the end of our junior year in 2024 and registered for the First Robotics Competition, or FRC. Veteran schools at FRC are large and experienced, and our tiny school was jumping into the deep end. We quickly realized how much work we needed to undertake. Before we could even begin working on a robot, we had to write grant proposals, gather member interest, and purchase materials. This is a challenge for any rookie team, but we encountered unique problems as a result of HHS being such a small school. Fortunately, due to a generous grant from the Hastings Education Foundation, we were able to fund the club's initial expenses, and we were very grateful that this funding also sustained us for much of the year. We were also supported, as Mr. Hills said, by the Austin Engineering Team, whose coaches and students from the very beginning had so much advice and guidance to give us that we would not be where we are today without them. Building a robot isn't cheap, so we also borrowed a lot of Jacob's dad's tools, thank you, and some materials from our mentors and those that were willing to support us. To garner interest and support, Jacob and I built a small robot and brought it to the club fair. We split the club into mechanical design, electrical programming, and outreach sub-teams, and accepted applications for leadership positions.
We started meeting multiple days a week to plan, design, and learn. The build season process included designing, coding, building, wiring, and testing the robot. As we continued to the end of build season, the team support increased. We were working four-plus hours a day and we even resorted to taking the robot to my garage and laboring for hours on end. Austining supported us to the finish line and was vital in our success. We went to the three-day Hudson Valley Regional Competition and ended up placing 16th out of teams from around the country, as well as winning the Team Spirit Award. This was surprising and very impressive for a rookie team and we were very proud of this accomplishment. After the competition, we started holding weekly robotics lessons for eight-to-12-year-olds at the community center, sponsored by the Hastings Youth Council in collaboration with Hastings Kids. Recently, the seniors chose a leadership team for next year and are excited to see how the team continues to grow under the leadership of Ella and Aiden. And this is Ella and Aiden.
Hi. Thank you. I'm Ella, this is my co-president for next year, Aiden. Since attending our first competition, we have purchased a Swerve Drive system that will help our robot move more efficiently. Instead of the tank base that we have right now, which is hard to maneuver, the Swerve Drive base will help our robot move easily in any direction. We are in the process of building it right now. As Jacob mentioned, we have a weekly robotics program where we teach kids the basics of robotics. Our hope is to encourage kids to join robotics in high school, foster their interest in engineering, and provide support for young girls interested in STEM. While running this program, we've noticed that the kids respond well and enjoy having teenage teachers. It provides the kids with good role models and our team loves to interact with the kids. Next year, we want to continue this program and possibly expand the scope of the club. Ultimately, the Bionic Buzzers would like to make it to the First Robotics World Championship in Houston. In order to do so, it is important that we go to more than one competition, preferably the, the New York Tech Valley Regional event in Albany to gain more experience. We hope to further complexify the structure of the team from more substantiated treasury role to increasing team member accountability to treating our team like a business.
Thank you.
So we also have a little demonstration, but before that, we also wanted to thank the PTSA for funding our buses that took us to regionals. We know buses are very expensive, so thank you for that. All right, so demonstration time. Yeah, so for a little bit of context, our robot was for this theme called ReefScape and it was like an underwater theme. So the PVC pipe over there is like coral and then we've got a green ball over there, it's algae. We may or may not use it.
Wow, excellent. Thank you all. Thank you all.
What's your robot's name?
What's the name? Do we have a name? There is a lot of team names, but I don't think we ever made an official name.
Jody. Name it Jody.
Jody.
It's like, it becomes like a person.
That was, that was the old one. Yeah. Yeah.
So, go ahead.
How do you travel with that?
Um, after the, when the school day ends, we get a couple of us and carry it from Mr. Hills' room downstairs into his car and then he drives it wherever we need to go.
My goodness. Wow. I mean, this evening like has me kind of speechless, I have to tell you. It's so impressive in so many ways. Just personally, like, we always talk about things that go beyond the classroom, like sitting there with direct instruction, taking things in. And it's just so wonderful to see and kind of mind-boggling on how many boxes, all these things check, both science research and robotics. And I, I couldn't be more impressed and, and really humbled by the amount of stuff that you guys do. So congratulations, it's absolutely amazing.
Thank you.
And one more thing, tomorrow at the eighth grade lunch, we're going to be taking our robot to the cafeteria so that we can, you know, start the pipeline for the high schoolers.
That's the right way to do it.
And then also, we hope to possibly start an FTC team, which is First Tech, so that's for younger kids. So that would be really exciting.
Wow.
Yeah, thank you.
That would be, thank you all so much, really. All right, I think I'm heading around here now. Thank you again. Um, moving on to, you know, as trustees know, when Governor Hochul, as part of the budget, passed a, well, passed as part of the budget, a directive to severely limit internet-enabled devices in schools. So for a long time as a board and as a community, we were kind of trying to find our way towards a policy. And we have a fairly strict policy already, but we put a lot of energy into that. The state has kind of taken the policy side of things out of our hand, hands, but what's left is the implementation side. And so I think, you know, we had met as a small group two weeks ago to talk about sort of initial steps that the schools might take to implement the policy. And tonight, we're giving an update on that. Is that accurate? Yeah?
Sure. And I, I feel quite humbled and small to follow the genius of our, our high schoolers. Let me ask you a question. How many of you have been here, say, since second grade? Stand up if you've been here since second grade, or how many? So the vast majority, how many third grade joined them, fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade? Yeah. Yeah, so, so, I mean, it's the persistence and the support you're getting from faculty all over, obviously the three teachers here, but you know, they're following in a long line. So I'm, I'm now going to tie this to a very brief update and you all don't have to stay for this, but you give us an audience. But I think, as you know, the governor in, in New York State, Hochul, has taken a very strict line as it relates to internet-related devices of the personal nature. Ben's been in some conversations in the tech committee, a few others. Mr. Clayman has been reaching out to the high schoolers to get input and all the rest. The flexibility that any one district now has on this is, is very, very limited. And, which means here in Hastings, and it's in the public record today, the legal guidance we're getting is that there can be no devices of a personal linked nature in the building in use between the beginning of the day and the end of the day. And that also, as the law says in the briefing that I shared with the board, and it's also now in the public record, that also includes the grounds out, out and about, but that's just, you know, from beginning to end of the day. So we, we know from now, a couple of years of conversations, certainly with families, that there's, and, and many of the faculty, there's been a strong interest in going, dare I say, to a strict place. So at some level, it has helped us that the governor has given very few degrees of freedom. That's, I think, a technical research term almost, but very few degrees of freedom on this. Very significantly, what we're left to do is figure out procedurally, how do we make this work very well for our faculty and staff so they don't feel like they're chasing phones or smartwatches or other things? But then also from the standpoint of those personal devices that are brought in for educational purposes, such as a laptop or other things, how do we make that also work? So there's a few implementation issues we're working through. We've been given a very tight timeline because we could have made some decisions, but we really had to wait until the governor had, had signed the law and it is a law. So we'll be moving very quickly. We have been in conversations and Melissa Semenski's part of this with the prince, with Andy and Tara and Scott and, and Dan, dare I use first names, both the middle school and the high school, to help us understand this, very important. Tara Ware comes from a school that had done this work previously within the city and Dan Walde could also come from a school that had gone down this path. So we have some experience. So a lot of words, but I would just urge the board to read the document that's here from our legal counsel because it lays out the law very clearly. I have a short cover memo with it explaining our next steps. I think each meeting now till the end of the school year will give you an update, but we have to have an adopted approved policy by the board, ready to implement by September 2nd, which is the first day of school. So we have a lot to do and since the high schoolers have stayed in here for this part of it, I assure you, we will have discussions and all the rest. I know there was an open meeting a couple of weeks ago that Mr. Clayman did. I don't know how many of you were there, but we, we will listen, but final comment, we have very few degrees of freedom on this. The governor has, has laid it down that, that internet-related personal devices cannot be out and about in schools from the beginning of day to the end of the day. And we will work to make this not go in full circle as reasonable as possible for our faculty and staff and as we think reasonably as possible for our students and their families. So I don't know if there are questions right now, but this is really more of a update with a written background.
Any questions, comments? Jody, sure.
Not exactly related, but I always wonder, I know it's not part of the, the sexual policy, I don't think, but how does this apply to teachers and other sort of, teachers or people in the classrooms? Because it always feels like a double standard of students.
It's a very good point. There is a policy cited within, well, we, we actually have a draft policy you don't have right now, but Keenan Bean has begun to put together because all of the districts they work with are hustling to come up with a policy. But in that draft policy, the policy committee will see and then the full board will see, they do reference the policies relates to mobile phone use, et cetera, for professionals. And I often have to draw some lines and here's the line I have to draw. It is very important for the adults in the building to still have access to this, but we now need to insist, and high schoolers are hearing this, we now do insist that this is only out for constructive, productive purposes on the part of our adults. We cannot be saying to our students, you can't have these out and then have our adults walking around doing this. We can't do that. It doesn't happen much, but it is very important for security reasons, safety reasons, that, that our adults do have this. Because as good as our various systems are, the texting function here becomes very, very valuable.
Yeah.
And so might feel like, it's a good question, Jody, might feel like a bit of a double standard. We want to try and express that it, how it would not be that.
Mm-hmm.
But that'll be part, the board will vote on a policy that will have explicit language that relates then to the adult, if I may say, adult behavior with these.
Thank you.
This is not a small matter. Many people know this is the first time in three, four years I've brought the watch out of the closet. And the reason is I, this was my watch and I got to have this more away than constantly have it out and explaining, what's my watch? Well, no, I now have my watch back on my wrist. So little things like that, I'm trying to model a wee bit what we need to have happen.
Well done.
So, is that all right?
Good.
Excellent. Excellent. Any other questions? Comments? No? Thank you. Moving on to our student reports. Ella and Kai, our AP's all over, by the way?
Uh, for the most part, yes. There's some that have been left over due to scheduling mishaps and I know that the issue with the AP Psych exam, I don't know if we have any takers over here. Yes. Um, so.
Sorry I asked. I thought they were done.
For the most part, they're over. I'm not taking any more, thank goodness, but.
An AP Psych was not due to anything related to our district.
Absolutely.
There was a portal access and apparently it was national, is from what I'm hearing.
Both online, right? Yeah.
One of my friends from New Jersey was telling me about how his school was dealing with it as well, so.
Right.
Everywhere. Um, but yeah, so all started us off. The senior prom is scheduled for next Tuesday, May 27th. The tradition is that we will all go to Untermeier Gardens in the afternoon and take some beautiful pictures. And we will eventually all meet up at the high school for some refreshments and we will then be bused to the prom site, which for us is the Glen Island Harbor Club in New Rochelle. Um, I know, I'm really looking forward to seeing everybody gussied up and ready. It's kind of crazy that we've made it to this point. But yeah, I'm hyped. Senior internships, which I have not stopped talking about, I'm aware that you guys have heard about it for like over a month, but we started officially yesterday, so I have been having so much fun, as I mentioned to Dr. Semenski earlier. It's been really, really great thus far and I know that everybody else is having a good time as well. I'm working with Ms. McCabe in the kindergarten classrooms. So the New York State Seal of Biliteracy panel interviews were conducted yesterday and I'm delighted to say that I and many others passed our examinations.
Oh, I'm not.
There were, thank you, thank you. There were 13 applicants from all languages in total, but that's applicants for mostly Spanish. We had a few apply for the French Seal of Biliteracy and one student, I believe, for Latin as well. So this was a three-part application. Firstly, you had to qualify the proper level of your target language in order to apply. So that was really just on the part of the teachers seeing who was at that level. The second part was creating an online portfolio that displayed your skills in both your primary language and your target language. So I presented a four-page essay that I had written in, in English class from two years ago. I used my final paper for my sophomore year and some writings and listings that I had done for Spanish as well. And the final part was the panel interview, which was hosted by Senior Lopez, Mademoiselle Chalmers, and Senora Bromberg. We, I presented my portfolio, they asked a couple of questions. It was an interactive conversation in both English and Spanish and I got the email confirmation later that day. So it's, it's a very swift process once you get to that final point, but this has been going on, I believe we initially applied a couple of months ago. So we all got our cords this afternoon, so very exciting. Another fun thing from today was the senior trip. So we all went to the Bronx Zoo.
Ah, that's right.
It was so much fun.
Beautiful day.
It was so great. Um, it was, I was a little concerned this morning. It was like colder, but it was beautiful.
See the red panda?
It's, we didn't. Not, not the people I was with at least, but I know some people got to.
They're very cute.
Um, there's a new exhibit that I really wanted to go to. I'm so annoyed it's not opening for another month. But, um, one of the greatest things was that the chaperones basically just let us loose. We're seniors, they don't mind. They gave us a time and a place to meet back up and we were set free and I think we were more excited to be there than the middle and elementary schoolers that we passed by. So it was definitely a lot of fun. And lastly, on my part, it's just a quick shout out that the annual jazz picnic will be happening on June 14th, so that's a date change. And it's going to be filled with student performances from jazz, whoa, jazz groups of all ages. So come out and support all of our musicians.
Kai, that's great. Thank you. Congratulations. Quick question on, on the Seal of Biliteracy, just you brought it up, does it only apply to languages we teach in school or is it open to languages that?
We have, on rare occasion, opened it to other languages that we haven't been teaching in the program.
Yeah.
But typically, the students who apply for the seal are in our program.
Gotcha.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Ella?
Okay, so there are quite a few events that are coming up, so I'll just go chronologically. So the first one is the K-12 art show, which has been happening since Monday and it's going through the 21st, which is tomorrow. So I have personally seen some of this art and it, everyone's just truly talented and I was thoroughly surprised because I have not seen any of the art since I have not taken an art class in high school. So I was thoroughly impressed by everyone and I highly suggest you guys go check it out because it truly showcases the wonder that art on the student body can create. And then also tomorrow is the FMS incoming grade five parent meeting. So this is held at 6:00 PM and this is a meeting for the parents of rising fifth graders. So this is generally a transition from elementary school to middle school. And so the kids and parents will both be briefed on what to expect. And so, as Kai remembers, they remember the parents panic about entering the building, which honestly, my parents did too because it's a whole new setting and I did for my brother. So it's an informational session and it will help with all the stress feelings that parents and students are feeling. And so also is the upcoming kindergarten, Hillside, upcoming Kindergarten Experience. So this is when the young preschools. So this is when the young preschools, Hasting's have the opportunity to spend half the day with their kindergarten classroom. So it's a fun day to wear current kindergarteners and their teach, with the current kindergarten, a fun day with the current kindergarteners and teachers and a great way for allowing the kids to get a sense of elementary school and what it will be like. And also this, more events this week, on the 22nd is the FMS fifth and sixth grade concert, so all the wonderfully talented kids will be able to showcase their years of work on chorus, on their years' work on chorus, orchestra, and band. And I certainly will be attending to support the young musicians, especially since my brother will be in it.
That's right. What grade is your brother? Is he a sixth grader?
He's a fifth grader.
A fifth grader.
Yes, so he plays clarinet and viola.
Oh, wow, lovely.
And then on May 28th is the Hillside Elementary School PE family dance night. So personally for me, this was one of my favorite nights because I got to dress in a pretty dress and got to hang out with my friends and family and show my parents all the cool dances I learned. So I felt very, like I had a spotlight on me and like I was performing for them.
When is that?
It is on the 28th.
May?
So, yes, so I believe, oh wait, I don't know when it is, I think Wednesday, yes.
It's Wednesday.
Oh.
Yes, Thursday, the 29th, that's right.
Yes. And then finally, as Ms. Chandra mentioned earlier, we have the Somers Science Fair for juniors on the 31st, that's I believe next Saturday. And so me and all the other juniors that are in science research will be presenting our projects, so we've all been working on our posters for these past few weeks and I can safely say that we are still working hard, but we have to keep, we're gonna be practicing over the next few weeks and really trying to get these done so we can present them up beautifully at the, sorry, at the science fair. So I'm honestly really excited to see everyone else's projects, so it'll be really cool to see.
That's excellent.
That's all.
Thank you, thank you both. You've had a very busy week, so we're about to go into the bond stuff, so feel free to make an exit. And while we have students here, again, yeah, I want to thank you all for coming and presenting and being here to support each other, it means a lot, certainly to you guys but to us as well, so. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck on AP Psych.
So Kai and Ella, you had a whole crew for you today.
Yes.
Well done.
I was walking around the Bronx Zoo with about five of those kids earlier today, so don't let the fancy attire fool you.
It could not have been a nicer day, though. It was like cool air, hot sun, little breeze, it's perfect. So, good vibes. Moving on to, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
To bond update, as trustees may know, we've been waiting to bring out the specs that we're gonna put forward, which underpin Proposition 3. This is specs and criteria that go out should the, should Prop 3 pass and companies whose turf matches, matches these criteria are allowed to bid back towards us as part of the process. So Bob Kernan from our, he's a landscape architect, he's our, with our partner from LA Group, prepared the specs and so I guess we should just sort of run through them in public. We don't have them on the screen, do we?
They're posted, all the board members have them and they're posted here. There's a link right in the document, we did not put them up on the screen, but it's in the public document here.
Okay, so it's pretty compact, so is it, would it be okay if we just read through them? Does that make sense? Yeah?
Yeah, and I mean, you may want to, as the memo says, Alex, and please go through it in a second, this is based on discussions with that internal group, so it's a combination of Bob's expertise with the good knowledge from here within, so.
That's true, I'm sorry, yeah, that's right. I'll just go through them because there might be some questions and comments, because we were, you know, we did work with the athletic director and some of the administrators to kind of set these in place, so. These are gonna be the synthetic turf requirements and any, should Prop 3 pass, any field that is considered would have to be able to fill all of these. So number one, infill should not, shall not consist of any rubber-based products and shall be composed of or a blend of the following approved alternatives: organic infill or a mineral infill such as sand, calcium carbonate, or other. What this means is, we talked, this type of turf does not require any infill. Traditional turf uses rubber infill and it's used for cushioning. This turf does not require cushioning, so it does not require infill. What you can do is you can choose to use infill either to make the turf heavier for footing, or you can put sand on it, or in the case that it's too hot, you can use calcium carbonate, which is chalk, to, to lower the temperature of the field. So that's why, that's why those things are specified, that those could be used, but they're not, they're not required. Any questions or comments about that? Number two, tough type, as recommended by the manufacturer, this is the type of material and suitable for multiple field sports, including but not limited to lacrosse, field hockey, softball, soccer, and football. Number three, toughed height, fields generally come in like a one inch, one and a quarter, one and a half, maybe up to two, different sports use different, different heights. Jody?
No.
Okay. As recommended by manufacturers to meet shock attenuation requirements and support multiple, multiple field sports, including but not limited to lacrosse, field hockey, softball, soccer, and football. Shock attenuation, turf system shall maintain ASTM F355 GMAX measurements of between 100 and 165 for the life of the warranty. GMAX measurement at the time of installation shall not exceed 125. Shock pad is optional and per manufacturer's recommendations. Shock pad is an additional layer that goes underneath the field to provide cushioning. Number five, permeability rate, should not be less than 30 inches per hour. This is how fast liquid can go through the field. Number six, the warranty shall be a minimum of 12 years per NICE Ed requirements. Number seven, product shall be recyclable and/or capable of being repurposed. Number eight, manufacturer's qualifications, so this is not about the turf itself, but this is to vet the, the provider, their background. So A, this, the provider would have a minimum 10 years in business manufacturing synthetic turf for use in athletics. B, a minimum of 25 completed installations of 65,000 square feet or more installed in the United States within the last five years. C, minimum of 10 completed installations of 65,000 square feet or more installed for public school districts. Number nine, the product shall not contain any lead components. Number 10, the product shall not be manufactured using PFAS. That's the set of criteria. And then as an additional note, again, this is all publicly available, the procurement process for synthetic turf, New York State, the Education Department, NICE Ed mandate strict procurement requirements for public school construction projects, including those funded through state aid or requiring NICE Ed approval. A, this process typically includes publicly advertising the bid, issuing detailed specifications and plans, and awarding the contract to the lowest qualified bidder. B, the design team recommends establishing bid alternates for each of the synthetic turf products, at least three that the district is considering. This allows for a more flexible and informed procurement process by enabling the district to evaluate various options based on cost, environmental considerations, and product performance. Those are the specs, just wanna get them out there, any, any questions or clarifications?
I guess I just wanted to kind of give a little bit of background on, it's gonna be, these are the technical requirements for anyone to submit, right? So, and I think we are still open to receiving feedback on what we're proposing, yeah?
I, I don't know, I mean, these are, these criteria are set because the Prop 3 is set, right?
Well, Prop 3 is, it doesn't have this level of detail in it.
Oh, you're right.
So really, you know, we know it's gonna be synthetic turf field based on Prop 3, but I think what the board is trying to do is lay out what you as a board would like to see once, you know, if, if the project was approved, then we would be developing, tightening up the bid specs, but to Maureen's question, there is now time because even after, there's about six months or, or more between when things are approved to when we would go out to bid. To allow for, I think, additional feedback on what, what we're looking at this evening, there may be some other ideas that between, that are either offered by people in the community who may know some, some other alternatives to consider or, you know, working with our design professionals to see what's possible.
Ah.
I think right now this reflects a lot of what the board has, has spoken to the engineers and architects about, about what, you know, the availability of getting within the current, with the current bid specs, some of the newer products that are now available and ensuring that that is going to be in the bid specifications, but you would still have time to refine them, I think is the question, and potentially add additional language if you felt.
Okay, good question, Maureen, I was unaware of that, actually.
Yeah.
I will say that one of the things, so as trustees may know, that I was in, I dropped in last week on the conservation committee meeting when they were discussing turf, and one of the interesting kind of concerns they had was, you know, this field should be approved, this type of turf we're looking for would have much less plastic or rubber in this case. So if I have my numbers correct, about 25% of the artificial field is the carpet, so to speak, about 75% is the infill. So this would not have that, so it's, it's a big plus in that sense. But one of the concerns is that even the carpet can shed nanoplastics, microplastics. And so coming out of the committee meeting, you know, actually just today, not the meeting, but the letter, we sent, I sent a letter with Bill to Bob Kernan at LA Group, because there are filtration, there are commercial filtration systems that catch, can, can filter out nanoplastics, microplastics, or things of that size, right? And so I asked Bob Kernan to find some information for us such that, you know, the way that this thing works, water goes through the field, there's a drainage system that feeds into retention ponds, and the idea would be to look into whether we can put commercial filters as part of those retention ponds that could sequester microplastics, nanoplastics, so whatever, in a perfect world, whatever leaves the field gets captured and doesn't ever end up downstream, literally in this case in the Hudson River. So we're looking into that actively, trying to point that out, although that's not part of the turf itself, part of the project.
Well, it's part of the overall project.
Yeah.
And you still have an opportunity to design and add some additional, similar to this bid, there are some different specifications that even they recommend, you could always have your base bid and then add alternates in terms of, you know, those type of enhanced systems into it to allow for flexibility in awarding different aspects of the bid.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
I just remember earlier I was asking, perhaps there's the people from LAN, LAN, about the different infills to the turf and they shared with us the coconut husk story of Irvington, perhaps?
Irvington.
And I just wanted to double check, like, what type of research has been done on this alternative fill and what we know about it and where else has it been used?
So this field would not require any fill.
Okay.
So, you know, we would probably, I mean, it seems like it's a good idea to put sand in it to weigh it down for footing.
Yes.
But there wouldn't be any real fill required. If, in the event, you know, this type of turf was not developed to have below plastic, actually, it was developed so that instead, in hot places, like the Southwest, instead of needing rubber fill for cushioning, you could use cooling fill. So that's kind of, we're piggybacking on, on that capability. So, you know, in the, if this field proved to be too hot, you could put the calcium carbonate fill, but it's very important to point out that those field measurements, my understanding of temperature, come from a field with chrome rubber fill. Chrome rubber fill is a huge heat sink, it's black in color, generally speaking. So the idea, our expectation would be that a field of this sort would have a totally different temperature profile than what we've been discussing. And we always have, sort of in our back pocket, the ability to put calcium carbonate and lower the temperature if that was ever an issue, so. Any other questions or comments?
So I think that in this whole process with the bond, one of the problems that we've had is communication. That I think there's a lot that we know, there are things that get communicated at board meetings, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it gets communicated to the entire Hastings community. And I think we know that there is significant support for this field, there's also significant opposition. Pretty hard to know where that's gonna go in the vote. But people have a lot of concerns, understandably so, and I think it's really kind of wonderful that it seems like we have an option that seems to be a significant improvement over other synthetic turf possibilities. I think we have to be really mindful about making sure that we make this information public, that questions get raised and answered, but also that, that we explain what it means in terms of the vote, in terms of if people vote yes, then what the process, like, we're not putting it in the bond, that this is in the bond, but we have to be very clear with people about what a yes vote, maybe not, maybe not a no vote, but what a yes vote, how this will play out with a yes vote and what we are promising as a district to do, if people, you know, are willing to vote yes, this is what the process will be and that there will be some kind of guarantee on our part that we will go with some product like this. And also that this is something that we can do because we can put it out for a bid, unlike proprietary.
Proprietary.
Other products that have been raised, that we, people wanted us to use, that we haven't been able to put out for a bid. But I just think this is like serious, and we've got time, but I think serious need for very clear communication about this.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, thank you. Any other questions or comments about the field? So one other thing we promised yesterday during the meeting, and we had some requests from the community, was to bring out, you know, it's been a while, maybe the fall, maybe even last spring, where we looked at the, the field use-loss data that the athletic director had compiled, how many games, how many practices, but that hadn't been obviously updated for this year. And so we'll have more comprehensive data as we go into the whole bond, you know, the finishing of the bond process, but Dr. McCursie received, I was gonna pass it around, some data about this year's cancellations and reschedules.
Yeah, and we, we'll post this after the meeting. It's very basic, it's for the spring and it's as of today, but as of this spring, we've had 35 home games canceled or rescheduled, three had to be put into a doubleheader format, that one was because of students being released from schools to do that. Some couldn't be rescheduled and had to be dropped and some varsity games had to be moved or modified. These are from Drew Wendell, athletic director. When I asked him, you know, what difference would it make if we had an artificial turf option, he said, other than for baseball, because there's not a plan to have a, it's a natural turf baseball field, that nearly all of these could have then been held. Because softball field out here was, was a team particularly hard-hit that even, because the field just wouldn't rain, so even, you can't play during the rain, for example, for softball, but once it stopped raining and the field drains, you could play. But all the other sports, you could play in the rain.
Yeah.
So that's, you know, lacrosse in this time of year and other sports. So, you know, that's one example where, and we can keep bringing you this information, you know, for at least heaven pull it for the fall. Fall, we had the issue of without, without, why we didn't have the rain, it was, it feels that we're getting run down and particularly hard to play on from, from things, but we can keep bringing this, you know, to you.
Yeah, it would definitely be interesting, and he didn't break it out here, you know, the games where we had to move from a home game to an away game, because we talked about that, it's obviously a busing expense, busing run is $700,000, somewhere in there, depending, but I think an additional factor.
What do you mean?
When, so let's say we're supposed to have a home game.
No, I understand, what's 700?
To send a bus full of athletes to an away.
$700,000?
702,000, sorry, I mumbled.
$700,000.
We wouldn't be doing that. 702,000, depending upon the distance and things like the time, stuff like that. But an additional wrinkle, when athletes have to go to away games, you have to realize is that, like, when you have a home game, if you're JV or varsity, you show up for the time, the game starts, and when the game is done, you leave. When you are bussed, there's only one bus, we're not gonna have two buses, so you might leave, JV and varsity, JV has to wait usually for varsity to play and then wait, wait, and then varsity has to wait for JV to play and then they all come back. So instead of having a 90-minute game start on time earlier in the day, close to your home, these are always later because you have to travel, and then you have the time of the two games and the travel both ways. So it is a absolute schedule buster for kids. And this is something that weighs, this is a calculus that parents have to perform, especially in high school, when you're worried about academics and other things like we saw tonight. Where there's no real schedule, and it takes hours and hours, you never know what it's going to be. Some parents do say and may say, it's just not really worth it to have, to try and do this right now, or to try and do it. And that's something that we're trying to, you know, rectify. Any questions or comments about data?
I think this is incredibly helpful, and I don't want to make more work. But I know recently, like, my children do AYSO soccer. I know that's not with the district. But they've had so many practices canceled because they're playing at, they have practices at Burke. So I know it's like aside from the school district, but it is another piece of it. And I don't know if it's worth collecting that data because it's secondary or
Well, I, I mean, I'd endorse that because one of the initiatives and hopes is that by having a turf field, we can open up more access for the village residents. And we heard that through a lot of the public comment the last several months. And if we stay fully all seven natural turf fields as opposed to two of the five being artificial, we're still staying, we stay with that same strict usage. So we could, I don't know if I can get that from Drew, and maybe we reach out to our, you know, recreational partners and say, could you, could you share with us the numbers? Wouldn't it be better to go that way, Maureen, than from within to figure it out?
Yeah, I think so. And also, also through our facilities department who has the most contact with the external
That's a good point.
Because we, you know, typically they don't go to athletics because, yeah, Connie.
Connie could pull that. No, I think it's a great question. Because I mean, we're hoping, there's a real town gown moment here.
Yeah.
And I think the board has made the correct decision on the lights. You know, but I'm constantly talking with Chief about how do we have productive opportunities for engagement? And he understands, and he agrees to it. But Chief Yosen, but even this week said, you know, there's several hours now of productive time that we don't have enough, but he understands. Yeah, so, but we can, we can get that information.
Yeah, we definitely
Do you want to help on that one?
Sure.
Okay, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? No? Teresa?
I don't know if this is the time. Hi, nobody's here. But I wanted to just thank my fellow board members and everyone sitting here. Bill, Maureen, Melissa, I'm, the amount of time and engagement, and Alex, especially you.
Thank you.
I, I think, like, maybe he is not sleeping. You're just, I mean, I'm so grateful you are at the helm
Thank you.
of this board right now for all of the communication, both in person and written. Really, thank you so much.
Thank you. That's very kind. That's very kind. I'm very happy to do it.
Agreed.
Agreed, absolutely.
And to everyone for showing up and writing letters and listening to people yell at you, you know. It's, someone said at that meeting that we went to, oh, Board of Ed trustee, hardest job in Hastings.
Thank you.
Highest paid.
Yeah.
Highest paid.
Thank you, Teresa.
But, yeah, it's been, it's been, it's just been really a great experience to serve with all of you and to be on the same team with all of you.
Thank you. Very kind. It's very kind. We're going to move on to report, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there's one other item on communications update on the bond. So I, meeting today with Melissa D. Libera and Cara Tameya, we are redesigning the bond page. It may take a couple of days, but, you know, we, and actually, I went to look at several other districts. So what we've actually been doing, which is giving a running record, is pretty typical. And I went back to look at a certain district that has a full-time communications team beyond jobbing it out for 20 hours a week. Because we only have 20 hours a week at Cara's time. You have to be particularly cautious. But what we're going to try and get to on the webpage, that's only one place, is make it very clear, this is the scope of the bond as approved by the board, with the images and all the rest. But there's a May 16th document that puts it all in one place. It's an update from the May 6th document you have. We'll have that there. And then we'll have the line item budget for the scope, so it's very, very clear. And then we'll have the FAQs. On a separate page will be the running record that we created, that includes the master plans and everything else. But, and when we get that, we'll do a sharing out, a blast out, to say, we've reorganized it so it's very clear. Because that's been a point of confusion.
Yeah.
Right? So people see the master plan, and they look at things in that. And it's in the midst of, it's chronological, but still, they got to figure out, okay, there are literally 15 things up there, just on presentations.
Too much, yeah.
That doesn't mention the eight letters, not to mention now there'll be three FAQs up. So we're just trying to whittle it down to one document.
That's great.
Yeah, that makes sense.
The budget, line item, and then the FAQs.
Right.
With then the renderings, which I think are very, very important. They truly
Yeah.
help tell a story. So that will be the change. It may take us a couple of days.
But it's on the website very clearly, the, right?
The data
No, no, what I'm saying is
The renderings.
No, the renderings are clear, but when you go to the page, you've got the renderings, you've got capital 101. You then have the referendum language. Then you have a couple of other statements. Then you literally had 12 to 15, chronological, 12 to 15 presentations, running back two years, right? And so what we're trying to say, keep the renderings. Actually, we're going to drop capital budget 101. We think by now people understand maybe the difference. And just sort of cut to the chase on, this is what the scope of the work is approved by the board. There's the line item budget, because we were asked about that. And then the FAQs. And, and obviously, people aren't only going to the website, but that's the repository. So that, that was an important insight from, yesterday, we had a meeting at the community center. It was a very important understanding of, and we, you know, I said myself, we've created some confusion. We'll clean that up.
Yeah, I mean, definitely one of the key things from the meeting yesterday, I mean, the, the fair complex is very complex. No pun intended, I say yesterday. It is hard to understand how the things fit together. It's hard to understand where things go. So, you know, the renderings are very outside-looking. We discussed the entryway a lot yesterday. Trying to understand how the flow works. It's even hard to explain if you know it. So we really want, we want renderings that will kind of explain how these pieces fit together better. And one sort of canonical document, we kind of reset for the next month before the presentations we're going to do in 529 and say, okay, this is what we're working off of, you know, let's base it on this. So, yeah. Definitely, definitely worthwhile.
We can keep working with it and all. There also been, final comment, a number of very good questions, probably now about 10 or 15 around Prop 2. How it makes sense of Prop 2. So about a week and a half ago, I drafted something. I cleaned up a wee bit today, but it's called Draft. We'll get that up there because it speaks to some of the most central questions right now on what, you know, you know, why the entranceway? You know, why can't you use ramps that exist? And actually, Maureen and I rewalked that today. You know, those ramps are not the solution. They would lead someone needing a ramp to nowhere. I'm not, I'm not making
That's true.
Yeah, that you go to nowhere, whereas in the new approach, you come in, you go right to an elevator. And then you get up to one level. So it's, we're just trying to make
But I do think, to your point, I think, you know, it's a, it's a fair question, I think, just maybe even clarifying, like Bill said, which we, you know, we're attempting to discuss yesterday with the ramping and, you know, is an, was an elevator considered? And all those, and they are, you know, they're fair questions, and I think either including some of those in a Q and A document, I think could be helpful, because that could be, you know, are you, you know, did you consider this other proposal? Or what, you know, why one over the other? And I think that's a, we do have the answers for that, and it may be helpful to kind of clarify some of the thinking around that as well.
Definitely.
And the wayfinding and all the rest, yeah.
Definitely, yeah.
But you know, I think one of the things that came up yesterday, and I don't know the answer to this. Several people came up to me, this was at the meeting at the community center, this senior citizen, I guess it was.
Slash resident.
Yeah, senior council, yeah. Meeting at the community center yesterday afternoon that Alex and Bill and Maureen and I were at. But several people came up to me and were sort of want, are not getting information from the district and want to know how, we've talked about this. And, you know, again, they asked if the, if the village could send it, and I said the village doesn't and won't send it. And I don't know what the answer is. I told them that there is a way that they can, you know, give their email and get it.
People should call the mayor and say, why can't you send out information?
I mean, the only one thing, I'm just throwing this out there as a, as a potential, there is an ability to sign up for our blast and emails for any resident in the district. And I'm just now thinking a little bit differently, like, maybe we should consider, and then just if, like, sending out some type of postcard as a separate, because sometimes it is embedded in newsletters of how to do that, but maybe we can, as we just think
That's a great idea.
You know, we can maybe do that, even if this time we do it within our bond newsletter. Maybe over the summer, we just send out like a simple postcard and to, you know, we have the bulk mailing, and we can send it, and then maybe just as a separate, like, in the beginning of the school year and say, you know, you can sign up for.
Because there's so many people that just don't get the information.
Does the bond newsletter go to every single
It does. So the budget and bond newsletter does, and we can
And do we have that mailing list?
It's all doors. You don't have a list.
Every resident gets, every household
It's all doors mailing.
It's bulk mailing.
Send a postcard out, an additional one.
Yeah. And we could either, right, we could include it in that newsletter as well. Because I think although the newsletter will have a lot of information in it, but then just even moving forward in terms of play, like, all the things that go on in the district that people may be interested in knowing about.
You know what, I'm sorry.
We had talked about those cardboard replicas, like visuals, like
We have the large format ones hanging down by the voting today.
Oh, good. That would have been really good.
Oh, you did?
The ones that are part of the, yeah, but
To sign up for
No, no, it's the visuals from the presentation that's been public. We just enlarge them and they're hanging down there. One thing about the newsletter
We should have put something today at the Cochran.
It is.
We should have put a thing
Oh, to sign up for information.
Oh.
Oh, that would have been
Well, you know, we should try, on 529, we should figure out something we can, because it's true. Unless we do something ourselves, it's not really, you know
I mean, that, that is why we did not, that it's that, we did talk about, which I think we did last year. We were going back to doing also some additional newsletters. Where, I mean, this year because we had the bond and all the rest, but the thinking to, in addition, the idea of having some maybe quarterly newsletters, I think there is a value to that because people do read them, you know. Like, sometimes the old-school method is
I wish, have those kids present their science at the community center. Those projects were amazing, right? And invite them, and then have a slide up. Also, I've been to different schools where they do have information about the bonds, and usually it's a QR code, but we could do something else, like, outside of the school for people driving by. And since ours is so centrally located, I wonder if we could do a banner or something to inform the
Some way.
I don't know.
One question about the newsletter, because something that came up also in the meeting yesterday was the, the small font size used on, on certain, certain things. I know, it's, but it's, it's an issue. I need reading glasses, by the way.
But that's a tricky thing. I looked at it, and I need reading glasses, too, just
No, but I was just wondering
No, but I mean, it's a, it's also a cost thing. Obviously, that's done
Well, I mean, yeah, I
Oh, because it's like
Yeah, I think that's something we could have
Get us fucked out.
I mean, I think, again, it was something that, that was, I didn't, I didn't think of that.
I just want to put it out there as something
How many times are you going to read it? I mean, you're going to read it, but, okay, so then take out your reading glasses and if it saves paper.
Right.
To double it short, I would just say, I'm just noting, because I actually need reading glasses and don't have them. When I got the budget one, I was like, wow, you know.
Yeah, I mean, we'll have more, it's, we're limited to eight pages, plus we were requiring you to do the translations. We had four pages in English, four pages in Spanish. And for the budget, we, we had whittled it way down as it is.
Right, because you either do eight or you do 12.
So the bond, we won't be doing the translation. So we might be able to
We don't have to.
Look at the font size. No, not for the bond, we don't.
Okay, just to mention, you know.
Yeah, but we can look at the font size. I, you know.
Yep.
Maureen, just because you've, and Jody, sorry, you've lived here longer. Is it always been the norm that the village doesn't send out our information, or is that a new development?
I, I think there may have been a time many years ago that we did share, I mean, again, as, as communication has changed, you know, I think there was a time we did, maybe even more people were connected with the school. There was, I, I would say it was kind of both. I think there was a time, and I'm talking about, though, maybe 15 years ago or so, that I do remember, maybe not on every, every occasion, but there may be times they shot out some info for us. But then we also did at one point have, when we switched over our communication system, I think there was a time that we may have had more people in there, and then because of the emergency notifications, people were in and out. So I think, I think there was, maybe then it became more apparent, you know. I remember even some people saying, how did I get dropped? And I'm like, we could put you back in. So I think they did do things, but that was quite some time ago. I want to say it was 10, 10 to 15.
Maybe it's something we put on our own
Plate.
plate, to think about for next year, speaking with the village.
I wonder, too, if there's a way to even give them something to say if, if, I'm just making this up, if people are there, like, something that we could leave down there and saying, you know, even if you're interested, even if they just fill out the form, and then we could pick it up and then put it in, you know. Just even paperwork for people that, even for like new people to the community, not necessarily only seniors, right? New people living in town, and if they're down there joining the pool or something, maybe there could be a form to say, oh, these are, you know, correspondence you could sign up for.
Yeah, it's definitely, like, this whole process has been a kind of a stress test, and that's one of the things that's a weak point. Like, we need to, we need to be able to reach It's true. I mean, we have to reach people who aren't in the school. It's hard.
I mean, how do people, I mean, new people to the village, are they, how are they signing up to the newsletter? I mean, to get notified from the village, how does that process work?
You have to, you have to sign up.
Through their website?
Yeah.
Okay.
You sign up through their website. If you want to get the mayor's letter, you sign up.
Yeah.
Another way.
I mean, maybe there's a way. I'm not saying they want to, but maybe they could put something on their website, though, direct it to our website, like, the way we direct.
I mean, Maureen, your idea at the beginning of, if we can afford to do a postcard blast, we do the postcard blast, and we do that if we can early next week. And that's tight, short, specific, and then we'd follow on with the newsletter. So there is the mailing expense, but it may be worth it.
Yeah, the bulk mailing is not terrible, to be honest with you, for a postcard.
At least get the sign, get, give people a chance.
Sure.
And we have had a good number of people signing up on the board page already, so, anyway.
But then, and then as we think about
I don't know how many we add in, but at least we made the effort.
I don't know how much we get from the cost of a postcard blast at this point.
It'd be worth trying.
I don't know how much we, how many people would sign up from a postcard blast.
I think, what if we do this, we want to figure out, encourage, and we can sort out an approach.
Let's get a link.
But maybe we could consider asking for that link on their website, because that may be helpful, like, sign, because we have we have partners on our website.
Sorry, I was just going to, because of time, I want to, moving forward, I lost, got sidetracked a little bit. Dr. Zsmanzki, with that intro, anything you'd like to highlight this week?
Sure. I did not memorialize anything robust, but I can certainly speak to a couple of key highlights. So first, I'd like to thank a number of committees that I've worked with this year. The teachers and members of the faculty in various roles have been absolutely incredible to work with. And I've been really, really proud of the work that's come out of these committees. So first, I wanted to recognize the Tri-State Steering Committee. This was the group, small but mighty, planned for our visit on cultural competence to support our next level of work for the district. And so we should have in about a month a finalized report, so we're looking forward to that. But this group finalized essential questions, determined all the consultancy participants, created the agenda, all the different interview focus groups. It was very robust, so I'd like to thank them. The Professional Learning Committee, this has been a mighty group, a very large group. And the purpose of this group has been to design superintendent's conference days. So the ones in the fall and the one in March this year. We, we've already almost finalized all of the days for next year as well. So we have some details to work out, but the concepts are, are really formed already. And this is also the crew that crafts the state-requiered professional development plan. So you'll see that on a board agenda coming soon. And it gives an overview of who we are as a district, what we believe in, and then a couple of providers or focus areas that we plan to work on as key areas of focus. So thank you to them. And we had an Authentic Learning Committee, and this group ended up pivoting. But this group was formed to ensure alignment between the portrait, authentic learning goals, any of the curriculum review cycle work, providing feedback, and faculty professional learning opportunities. So one example of that I can give is the high school with Andy Klayman and Tara, where a lot of their faculty meetings have built-in time around project-based learning and thinking about key elements there. And that has been sustained over the course of the school year. And so this committee began early in the year and was providing feedback on that, and then morphed into a collegial circle type of group where they were actually bringing lessons and showcasing areas of authentic learning in their own practice. So that was very exciting, so I want to recognize them. So that was very exciting. So I want to recognize them. Restorative practices, I'll come back to in a moment. Behavioral charter created, uh, has been working on creating a district-wide behavioral charter and/or differentiated behavioral charters for each building. To support a welcoming and affirming environment. They've been really connected with the work that happened last year around the charter, um, thinking about agreements of who we want to be in terms of behaviors as a community. That has since gone back and forth with work that happened around the code of conduct, which we'll be getting into soon, once that goes to public hearing. Um, thinking about the discipline codes. This group still has work to do. We had some scheduling conflicts because there's been a lot of after-school, um, work meetings and things that have been going on. Uh, but they are firmly in motion. And then finally, I did want to circle back. Restorative practices, they had, um, a really unique collaboration this year. And the idea was that this group developed a plan to extend professional learning that was focused on proactive and reactive uses of restorative practices. And designing strategies to support application of learning to professional practice. The group surprised me and it was, uh, a really, speaking of authentic learning, that is a great way of modeling that as a group of adult learners. Came to the table, we had this charge that I just articulated, we started the work. And then we started getting feedback from the faculty that the work that we had done thus far around restorative practices. Provided a very strong conceptual background, but folks were having a hard time applying it to their practice. And so we stopped and we really listened to that. And we started vetting other providers and we dug in and we were looking at what they had to offer. We canvassed the region, we spoke to regional colleagues around what they were doing around restorative practices. Because the idea was, don't continue in the same vein, no matter how much you enjoy the thought partner you're working with. If the challenge is then taking all of the conceptual and emotional buy-in for the work, but having difficulty applying it, we wanted to make sure we got it right. So we did unanimously just select a new provider, the entire committee. Um, and so we are looking forward to receiving a proposal from Trudy Junkrowski, uh, from Cluster Community Services. We were able to learn about the work, see the work happening in another district and be part of a participation. Bring her to our committee and facilitate restorative work. And the committee was absolutely unanimous that she's the right person and we are very excited about moving that forward. So that, those are some highlights for, uh, for the committee work that's happened this year. And then I would just be remiss not to make a quick little nod. This morning, there was middle school ELA inquiry work happening with Diane Cunningham, who has been supporting us with coherence with our middle school writing program. And kudos to our teachers, just, uh, really incredible work. We had, our English teachers were there, our special ed, uh, teachers were there. We had Janice Mateo Toledo, Dr. Mateo Toledo was there from a culturally responsive pedagogy's lens. And today was really focused on finalizing some net, like a narrative writing continuum, for lack of a better way of articulating it. But just basically, what are the key things that we need to be working on, the key categories? How are we defining them? What kind of language are we using with students? And then being able to then take that and pivot into assessment in terms of checklist rubrics. Um, this group did a lot of peer review, feedback, checklists that students could work with directly because actually that was what the research said could really move things forward in the classroom. So the group rolled up their sleeves. They were part of the design process of figuring out which direction we go in with the work. Uh, and I am really looking forward to continuing next year with Diane Cunningham and this team. We're gonna do some practice exchanges so people can actually see things being applied in classrooms and breaking down walls and doing some lesson studies together. So very, very excited about the curricular work that's happening there too.
That's great. I could also, you know, there's so much that goes on that people don't see. It's so hard to bring it out. But it's important to remember, strategically, you know, when we talk about professional development, a lot of this is underpinned by professional development.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I mean, that's really.
Yes, all of it, all of it.
Right.
And professional development and you're thinking about the learning for adults. It happens through internal expertise with colleagues learning from each other, facilitating each other. And sometimes from external expertise, bringing in a thought partner to help us, someone with a real, real solid expertise in, in a particular lens. And sometimes it's through our networked improvement communities. We go out regionally, we see things in action. The art department just went and saw a choice-based art program in Bedford. They came back completely energized and thinking about what we need to do in terms of cultivating authentic learning with our, in our program. So all of these many things are in motion and I'm certainly excited to share about the great work our faculty is doing.
That's great. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Moving on to a report from our business official.
So as you probably know, New York State had officially passed its spending plan on May eighth, um, for this upcoming fiscal year. Um, we're pleased, I'm pleased to report that the state allocation that we did use in our budget, um, or the budget that's being voted on today. Did closely align with what we'll actually be receiving. Um, the overall spending for all education spending in New York State went up by about $1 billion this year. Hastings, uh, the good thing is that the, last year's in particular, the governor's proposal, well, no, this year more so than last year. I think they, she put forth a, a pretty robust spending plan for schools. So although our legislators, um, there wasn't a lot of room for, for additional monies. There was other matters such as the cell phones and things like that, that I think delayed was one of the delays in, um, finalizing the state budget. But again, we were very, um, happy because it does reflect an increase, um, of foundation aid in other expensive states that we'll be receiving next year. Although there were some districts that with the final budget did receive some additional dollars, we did not. Because we, some of them were a little bit less than, than we were being, um, allotted in the first go-round. Um, one of the things I just want to note that sometimes people will see a dollar amount publicized on the amount of aid we receive. I believe the run reflects about $9 million, but there's about $450,000 of pre-K monies in that dollar amount. And we know we don't have a pre-K program. Neither does most of our neighbors in the region and, um, that allocation started off to be about $50,000 a few years ago as universal pre-K was put into the state budget. And the amount has grown. So that's, that's good news that that amount has grown because quite frankly, the, the previous amount would not be enough for us to develop a program here without a significant increase, um, to our budget. One of the things that we, that not only Hastings but other districts have struggled with is if we were to develop one, you know, it would have to be housed here and then how does that work and all the rest? Uh, we did look a few years ago for, we did do an RFP for, to, to try to engage some community partners. And I think, you know, now we do still have the allocation in between now and next year, we'll, we'll start to mitigate potential opportunities to tap into those funds. Because it, it is a, it's a shame that there is a good amount of money there, but you know, how, how can you do that with private schools and make it work, um, to, to use that funding to open up spots? And it wouldn't be something we would be looking to run ourselves. Um, and then the second update is just really to provide the board an update about the Farragut wing. Um, as we had reported, I believe at the previous meeting, we are contractors now back on site, working to restore the Farragut, um, wing. And, uh, we've been having our weekly construction meetings have resumed and we're already seeing some key milestones being met. The downstairs, um, the lower floor was, is completely framed out. Um, we're working in tandem with like multiple kind of primes to try to find, uh, competitive pricing on, on the systems that need to be replaced, such as the fire suppression system, the ventilation, upgraded electric. So, uh, this is a very fast-moving project because of course we need to get back in there and, um, you know, we really appreciate it of our architects who, quite frankly, this was a lot of work for them to take on. It, you know, they're, we're doing our bond and the nature of this project is insignificant and we're doing it in a very short timeframe. But I think we're making, we have good contractors on site and, um, we're pleased with the, uh, with the, uh, progress they're making thus far. So, you know, again, is our aim is to get back in there, I would be in the next school year.
Is, is the goal to start school in September?
Yes, that is the goal. That is the goal.
Does it seem helpful?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I think it's like anything else. I think, um, you know, some occasionally, the only thing I could see potentially delaying it and not by a significant amount of time would be if there was an issue with getting some mechanical system or something of that nature in. But again, I think they understand, you know, when we need to be back in there and, you know, since the beginning of these meetings, that's the goal. And, and everyone is on track to ensure that we get it back in there on time. I mean, there, in any scenario, there could be a one or a week, one to two week delay in that. But I'm not suggesting that. I'm just saying, I'm just trying to forecast if there was a bump in the road somewhere. But right now I think we're, we're in a good, a pretty good place. I feel pretty comfortable.
It's, we're, we're fortunate that this occurred while we were in a relationship formally competitively bid with LAN. So LAN is managing it and organizing it and they've organized their teams. So there's a specific person for us relative to this. Different than Matt and Danielle, though they're in the, in the background. So they're very organized, very focused. They have weekly meetings. I'm, I can't get to everyone, but I was there today. Follows a specific agenda right down to the details needed, such as which size ceiling tile are we coming back with, determine it, what type of flooring are we coming back with? What are the number of outlets to put back in? So that'll be, uh, an example. It may sound small, but we just were today nailing down, no pun intended, how many outlets in a room to diminish extension cord issues. Make sure you, when you bring the smartboard back, the plug for that is behind the smartboard. It may sound small, but we've had wires running all over the place in these rooms. Um, there was a good question that came up actually yesterday, a critical question about with the, the bond. If Prop Two goes through, that brings us to classrooms in the cafeteria. And it brings us that one smaller space. Well, part of what we're doing in the lower floor in the Farragut wing is creating additional smaller space. So that had been a, a concern from the room yesterday. Oh, you're only bringing us one. Well, no, as part of the Farragut wing being brought back, we're gonna, we're re, re, reconfiguring a few of those rooms that give us those smaller spaces. But most importantly, it's incredibly well organized, incredibly well-run, LAN, PBDW and our own team there with, with Renew. Uh, so we had all these relationships.
That's great.
So that we could, if we didn't have that, it would be a very different place. But we have to press, we have to push. Maureen is excellent at, at, you know, keeping the pedal to the metal on this one. But, uh, so we'll see. I, 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 we will keep you informed, we'll keep families informed. Uh, it'll be a push. It'll be a push.
I, I have an incoming fifth grader, so she's, you know, where, where are we? She's very nervous.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, where will we be? Will we have a classroom? Will we be with, you know, eighth graders?
Well, we're, we're working hard to have it be a revitalized space.
And, and again, well, you know, obviously even with this upcoming weekend, we talked about, you know, making sure that with even with the days off for the school, that we wanted to make sure that they weren't losing time. You know, obviously they're off Monday because they're union shop, but it's like Fridays and things of that. And, and as we get, um, closer to the opening of school, you know, there may be times we'll do double shift. I think it's just right now, the work is following, um, there, there's certain things that need to occur before like we get to that point, like finishes. Because now they're framing, you have to put in the ventilation, you have to get in the other mechanical systems, which are, are being finalized right now. And like as Bill said, it, it gets from the outlets to how do we abandon the previous, um, sprinkler system? Do we leave it in place because that might be an easier way? Do, you know, there's so many different things in terms of, um, other, other, uh, decisions around, um, other types of alarms and things in the building. So, but again, we, they understand our schedule, um, and from the beginning, they're pushing for that. And like I said, LAN, I'm very appreciative because, you know, when they bid work architects and engineers, I mean, it's almost easier for the construction companies to, to, um, man up. Because they can go to the union shops and pull, you know, hire more workers. I mean, when you do it with architects and engineers, they don't hire additional architects and engineers to bring in for project-based work. And they were already, uh, maxed out between our, you know, meaning they take on work based upon what they can handle. So really they have done up and above. I mean, anytime they've been on, even on vacations, quite frankly, I've been in contact with them the entire time. Even they were like in Aruba with their families. So they've really been, you know, they've, like Bill said, we're very fortunate that they were, um, you know, with us. Because they really, I think without them, we would not be where we are today.
That's for sure. It's great to know. Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to public comment, there's no public, so we're gonna move on to business items. Are there any questions or comments? Uh, are there any questions or comments regarding business items one through thirteen? Just wanna, I just wanted to call out, um, number four from the Elidet Jackets Booster Club, providing a donation of $600 for the three athletic newsletters. Communication is such a, you know, like coming out of the pandemic, all those links have been broken. It's such a common theme. And so I just want to thank them for that. That's a great effort. Any other questions, one through thirteen? Is there a motion to approve business items one through thirteen? Is there a second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to placement services for CSE and CPSE. Are there any questions or comments regarding placements and services for CSE and CPSE? Is there a motion to approve our placement services for CSE and CPSE? Is there a second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to personnel, this is a consent agenda. Are there any questions or comments regarding our appointments, our amendments, our resignations or our leaves of absence? Is there a motion to approve our consent agenda and personnel? Is there a second? All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Approval of minutes, this would have been from the May sixth meeting. Any questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve our minutes from the May sixth meeting? Is there a second? All in favor? Aye. Moving on to policies, this, we only have one. This is a second read, so we will be voting on it. This is policy forty-seven fifty for the promotion and retention of students. This covers promotion and retention, but through the three schools, um, the different policies set forth at Hillside, at FMS and at, uh, Hastings High School. Are there any questions or comments? Anybody who worked on it want to kind of frame it a little bit?
On the policy, I believe I was there for when we worked on forty-seven fifty and Sylvia Austin.
She's not here.
I, I have a question. As I was reading it and I was looking at the early identification and intervention piece, is there any type of timeline by which, you know, like parents would be notified by first semester, second, you know, first quarter, second quarter, anything like that built in? So it's not a surprise. Of that their child needed the intervention or that they're going to be retained later on, like if there were some sort of, you know, timing mechanisms in here as well, just to ensure that it was. You say early identification, but what does that mean?
We did not, we did not identify, I mean, it's only what, what is indicated in the policy. We do have something around attendance, right? So there is a timed notification around that. But we do have a general practice where there needs to be ongoing communication. It's not codified in policy, but if there, you know, there's, there is an expectation that there are grades that are up to date. People have a sense whether or not, uh, someone is failing a quarter. So that there is a built-in timeline for some of those broader things that are captured in the policy, but nothing specifically in the policy language was discussed around notification.
I, I mean, the word promptly is there. I think that was designed to give some emphasis to, you know, but putting specific timeframe in it, I think was a little tricky as to what that might mean. I mean, it is a second read. You could ask us to, you know, if, try and codify that a little more. Um, it's, it's a good question.
Do you feel like promptly covers your concern at all?
As a general practice, I will say that we are not in favor, generally speaking, of retaining students. There is research around that. So we, you know, I, I, I just did want to add that piece of.
That's important.
Philosophically, um, I do think it matters when it comes to this policy.
I mean, it's, the, uh, the policy committee definitely has to meet, it's usually meeting monthly, it's definitely gonna meet again because of the, it's called the mobile phone question. You know, so if you want to redirect this back and say, could there be consideration around any sort of timing indication beyond promptly? I mean, I think that's reasonable. And I think Melissa, you raise a very good point, that policy often at that top will have some preamble that speaks to that purpose. You have, you know, this is a mobile phone, you can read the first paragraph there.
No, I think that would be a nice preamble.
But I think having that, if the board's agreeing with that overarching commitment to try and minimize, I mean, maximize promotion, minimize retention. That language maybe is assumed, but it's not up here. So those are two reasons that, maybe send it back and say, could you look at any indication of timing response? And I think this would be involving, I think, the principals and some of the, the principals, APs, and a few of the counselors. You know, maybe Laura Thier would come back, well, actually, it's better not to release them, they've looked at it.
Because I understand that wanting a set time, because I think that then also can be problematic. But I just wasn't sure if something slightly more specific would be helpful.
Yeah, I mean, this witnessed all the cross-outs, mark-outs, different colors, this was scrubbed.
Yeah.
But so there, but I think it'd be, it's worth finding out explicitly, why is it only promptly?
I can't hurt to, to add the-
I do like that even more.
Yeah, I, it can't hurt to say that as a district, our goal is to follow the research, which indicates that retaining a child, you know, whatever, can be detrimental. And we always aim to promote when possible, something like that.
All right, so I mean, if it's not an undue burden for the administration, maybe we just put this, put this egg back in the-
As a reigning policy committee member.
Yeah, we're meeting on the twenty-ninth. That doesn't answer your question, though. I give some validity to your question, so do you want some kind of timeframe in there on retention, or?
I defer to the principals, just like, take my question as a consideration and see if something could be slightly more specific. But if they feel uncomfortable with that, I accept it too. I just, I get nervous because I know of situations where parents aren't informed in a timely manner just because something happens. So what, what does that mean?
So it's not a timeline of the issue, of, of the service or the retention, it's the parent notification?
What I'm hearing, David, and I think it's is, if, if there's not a specific, something more specific than promptly, why? And I hear Catherine saying you're prepared to hear the answer, okay, that makes sense, but we, we could do that. And, and not, not to name names, I will, but Amy claims particularly skillful looking at these, understanding where.
Okay.
And I think Amy might join in that. But I, I, I think some eagle eyes there on that, and then that-
Maybe an open seat on the policy committee. Because Sylvia was on the-
But if you have an issue with my suggestion from the policy committee, I'm open to discussion.
So let's, let's kick it back.
It's a hoot.
But maybe it's even a sentence that the, the district prioritizes substantial communication with families, you know, throughout this process, or, you know, something.
I mean, it's still, it's still a pretty general.
It's still vague, it's totally vague.
Like, you can say that without saying that, like, you're saying that's what you do, it doesn't need to be policy, that this is what our culture is.
Right, but where does that go, though?
The preamble is like, I mean, when you say that, as, as a parent, it is sort of heartening, like, you know, so why not, why not put it in?
But I would also see some parents saying, you said that you, you know.
You still can.
It says you communicate to us, no one communicated to me.
But.
Things happen.
All right, so we'll kick it back. Sounds like you're nominating yourself for the empty spot on the-
Me? No.
We need some.
Maureen is the best.
She actually is the best.
Yes, on the policy committee.
We'll keep that seat warm.
Okay, okay, we have to stay.
Yes, she's taking it!
Good. All right, so we're gonna kick that back, we're gonna table it officially. So moving on to second public comment, there's no public. Moving on to agenda review, now we're into, we're into June, June second, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, and this is gonna be a pretty heavy meeting just to plan ahead. The public hearing on emergency plans and the district code of conduct, Hef grants, there'll be bond update.
June third?
No, June second, it's Monday.
Oh. Oh, it's a Monday.
Yeah, it's on a Monday because there was an issue with, on the third Tuesday, Hillside had to schedule a key musical-cultural event. And it was easier for us with advanced planning to make the board meeting on the Monday than ask them to shift.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it was a student-centered.
Yeah, now we know.
I was a little surprised too, so I wanted to double check.
We need a quorum, you know. Moving on to board comments.
Let me, let me just emphasize, if, looking into the seventeenth, because Alex and I discussed this, that will be also a different start time. That'll be a five-thirty formal start time for the meeting, the reception and gathering for retirement tenures from five to five-thirty. And that is here, and you'll notice there is no executive sessions. Believe it or not, a few years ago, we had an executive session on top of the reception.
Yes.
Not, not, not a great moment relationally with the retirees. So we have, that's why you see a little bit of a pileup of executive sessions on the second. But just so you flag in your calendars, that different time. But five to, it'll be here, and Lynn Walker's usually managed that, Tricia now is doing a wonderful job picking that up. So this proves to be a wonderful space for the reception.
Yeah, it was nice last year.
Yeah, yeah.
Last year, we noticed something that we wanted to change. I think it was, because I remember a lot of people left.
It was a sequence of something, I think.
Oh, yes.
It still leaves up to individual choice.
Yeah, I know, we can't glue anyone to their chair, but-
All I'll say is in my one-on-ones with each tenure, I did mention in the reception, and if you could stay around for the retirees.
Oh, that's right, that's, I guess.
That's what it was, they emptied for the retirees, yeah.
So I, I don't know what more we do about it.
Oh, 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 so tenure leaves.
Right, we did tenure fir-
One or the other, we do, I think you want-
I think it was tenure first, they all left, and there were fewer people for the retirees, and that, that was the lamentation that, it's nice to, it felt nice to have a full room in here.
To get tenure, you should have-
Yeah, exactly, the last task, final boss, is to like, yeah.
Four years and four hours.
Yeah, why not? What's four more hours?
I wanted to say, it's Mental Health Awareness Month, and there are many districts around the state that are acknowledging it and, and doing programs for parents, teachers, staff. Governor Hochul's making a really big deal about mental health in schools, lots of money put toward it. And I would really like us to do something next year as a district. I join a committee as a parent to get some things going. And I, I think we should use the data in our panorama survey to really help us tailor to our community. I'm thinking of, you know, sense of belonging. We had some numbers that were concerning in our panorama survey. So, yeah, we can use data and anecdotes to really, to just do something.
So I, if I could just respond to that, too. I couldn't agree more, I think we can do better at leveraging the panorama data. And that's also very connected to our cultural competence visit, right? We can see disaggregated data around that. I did want to say that recently was Teacher Appreciation Week. And one of the things that I shared with the faculty, because I think wellness encompasses an entire community, was access to this organization called Breathe for Change. They have an educators collective where teachers can have access to yoga, social-emotional learning, and mindfulness strategies. And actually, as a, a passion, I'm currently finishing up a certification in those areas. And I'm doing that on Monday nights, and it's funny, just talking about that because the board meeting sits on a Monday night.
Oh, no.
So a couple of hours every Monday night, I have been working towards a certification in yoga, social-emotional learning, and mindfulness. And I've been actively folding that into meetings. So for example, with the K-12 Gender Committee, I did a trauma-informed approach, and we level set with some wellness activities before we got started with having difficult conversations. And all of this is about mental health, about wellness, and around emotional regulation, which plays out very significantly in terms of creating cultures for learning, for students, too. So it is on my radar, it is also a labor of love for me, so I am actively working on that.
I'll mark my calendar for January next year, so we can think about this for May.
That's great, thank you, Teresa. Any other board comments?
I just wanted to redirect the attention again to Dr. Samansky, because she recently had a proposal accepted. And if you wouldn't mind sharing that with the group, because I think being a learning organization and learners, learners ourselves is so important, and I really love that you applied and you got accepted, so if you wouldn't mind sharing it.
Sure, so thank you. So my colleague in Irvington, Gail Duffy, and I, not only do we work closely as regional colleagues, and what I was just telling you about with this Breathe for Change program, ironically, I did not know this, but she also went through her certification, so she and I had been aligned on that.
Different groups, like?
And, no, I mean, it was, it's, this particular program is geared for educators and educational leaders. And so many people are doing this across the nation with this particular organization because it is geared to bring wellness into the schools. So Gail and I have been facilitating for the Putnam Northern Westchester Bosse's region. We have monthly curriculum council meetings. She and I led a session for the region around social-emotional wellness and what that means in leadership practices. And so coming out of that, we were now tapped, so every month, we start the region with about five minutes of a mindful moment. So all of this keeps, you know, moving along here. And so we decided that we were going to submit a conference proposal for the statewide conference, New York State Association for Women in Administration, for female leaders. And we did get accepted, which, you know, it's not-
Congratulations, yeah.
Yeah, and it's around that, so it's social-emotional leadership plus, and it's, ideally, it's thinking about cultivating social-emotional connections, not only with faculty through the work that you're doing, but also, you know, taking care of yourself so that you're in a good social-emotional place to be able to lead in that way. So that's what we'll be doing, we'll be facilitating, and that's a statewide, so that's exciting.
That's cool, sorry, congratulations, yeah.
It'll be good.
Anyone else?
A couple of dates in the next week that are important. One is next Thursday, the twenty-ninth, there's the meeting at the Community Center at seven for the board with the community. So anybody who can come, I think it's really good to be there. I won't be able to be there, but I, last go-round on a budget, I thought, felt like that was a very important, on a bond, that was important. And I think a lot of these questions and information, misinformation can be addressed. And the other thing is on Sunday is the Memorial Day Parade. And if there's anyone who can participate, it's, hold on one second, and I'll tell you.
It's at 1:00 PM?
The one-thirty lineup on Chauncey, you know, by, like Reynolds Field.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Let me just check burdens.
Well, that's convenient, Catherine.
Easy for me.
Easy for you, right?
My mom's gonna come and watch. My first parade.
It's, it's actually really fun, it's Sunday lineup around one-thirty on Chauncey. You'll still just be different groups.
Yeah.
It would be, do we need to RSVP?
I'll, I'll let Lisa know, I'll let her know. But, and then we carry this banner.
One, two, three, four?
I'm, I'm a very, very likely, I will lock it down the next day.
Should be like green candy or bubbles or something.
You are going if you're around.
If you're here at Barone.
It's actually really fun, and I'm gonna suggest that if you have any Hastings gear that you wear, like a baseball cap or t-shirt, or-
You have guns, too, so.
Little league or something, sure. Rec ball, coach.
Yeah, I got stuff, I know, I got stuff. I can lend you stuff.
It's, it's actually fun. I have some great pictures on the cast.
Oh, the mascot.
You're reading my mic.
It's not too hot out.
Somebody dressed up as the Yellow Jacke.
Could I ask my children to do that?
It's an adult-sized costume, I think.
Your husband.
Oh, could be asked.
Now, now you're talking.
Or Dave. I know, Barone would be perfect. Also, can I just tell you something amazing in terms of civic engagement? I do think we have a very engaged town, I think Alex knows this too, but as of seven forty-seven, 1,758 people-
No, 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 there's more now.
There's more now?
More now.
What's it now?
It was like up to nineteen hundred.
I mean, that's amazing.
Where are you seeing the numbers?
Just people texting us.
Oh.
That's a lot more than last year.
It is?
Yeah.
I haven't voted yet, we have to, I have to-
Oh, then we gotta go, we gotta get going. Okay, any more?
I have no idea.
Any more board comments? No, is there a motion to a jerk?
Well, some of us still have to go vote.